I need to confirm that.
Yeah, I'm so tired of their emails.
Call meeting order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is saying it's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have no additions or changes to the agenda. Uh, disclosure of actual or potential conflicts of interest. Uh, communication from the public. Do you want to do that or are you going to do it during years?
Probably better now.
Huh?
Probably better now.
Now, okay, we have, look at, Carrie, I'll let you introduce.
Uh, we have Ruber Selga from Mr. Cotton's welding class in Shaw.
Yeah.
Do you want to tell us about what you did?
So we took the benches out of the old middle school out of the gym, picked the wood out of those, and we turned them into benches for all three of the schools. And so we took all the benches, cut them off, and then we made like a variety of different types of benches. There's one at the middle school, one at the high school, one at the grade school.
So when you did that process, what was the most challenging part?
Uh, probably getting the lengths of the angles, right?
If anybody has any questions for.
Are you still making more benches?
Uh, we have one one we're making right now. Now I'm going to go to the museum.
Good, yeah, good job.
Liz, I'm glad to hear you guys are claiming some of that old lumber out of there and put it to use. Uh, I know it's hard for kids come talk to everybody. Good job, really talking to everybody, and thank you for coming.
Can you tell us where they're located so when we walk into the buildings, we can have an idea where they're at?
So when you walk into high school, there's one to the left of the door, and then I think at the middle school and grade school that they're by the offices.
I haven't seen any yet.
I have, I can just say that we had a lot of people really enjoyed the one at the high school, and it's been really great to have it there, so.
Did you guys salvage anything else that you're going to do with projects or is that?
Uh, that's the only thing we've done so far for salvaging the work.
So I did salvage a good bit of the gym floor, but my intentions was to make projects out of it, but I can't get the nineteen, nineteen hundred layers of polyurethane off. It's in the shop until I can find an efficient way to get that off to make something out of it.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. I had number eighty-three point zero. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Full move.
Motion by Ryan, second.
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing none, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Add number eighty-four point zero. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Kayla, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Board discussion. Dallas, you had the bills, anything? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Add number eighty-five point zero, administrative and committee reports. I have a thank you here. Never are we more aware of how much our friends and family mean to us than at this time of loss. Your kindness and sympathy will always be remembered from the family of Bernie Arnold. I had a Zoom meeting this morning with the through your Co-op. A, just a couple of things that that the Co-op is, is dealing with. One will be the formerly it was called the after-school program, now it's called the out-of-school program. And, and they will be the, Julie, our director, will be dealing with Carol on working with that, uh, will might be part of having a out-of-school program. So it's, it's in the works. And the only other thing is, uh, our meetings have been face-to-face, started with the COVID and stuff, and, and of course, uh, we meet Phillip. And, uh, you know, it's quite a drive for everybody for a meeting that lasted this morning eighteen minutes. You know, we just go over the bills and things and so on and so forth. So, uh, we've gone to Zoom quite a bit. But in March, I think we're going to be going face-to-face because we have a huge project going on, and they're going to redo the entire handbook for the employing handbook. It's completely out of date, so they'll be working on that. Other than that, uh, we're still working on, uh, it's not accreditation, accreditation. Julie is helping through through her Co-op. Kadoka, I think, has finished, and White River is just wrapping up, and we're in the process, so. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Carol.
Hi, everybody, and Happy New Year, officially here. So Dean Kurtz Construction, and you should have a copy or have access to the official notice of temporary stop on the project, um, and they, uh, want the temperatures to be a constant forty degrees, and then they'll come back and finish, um, the projects that they have left. Well, if you've noticed, though, the signage is up for the new middle school. Looks so nice. It's just matches the awning. It looks very attractive, so good job, Lord, deciding on that. Comtech was contacted about our P A system in the Warrior Center, had some concerns about not being able to hear, um, one side, the north side not, you couldn't hear as well as the south side, and it still kind of depends on who's talking, but it's, I think it's better. Lanay is working with them on the managing the system. They had it at a hundred percent, supposed to be eighty, so she's going to monitor that, um, and then also hooked up a computer so they can look at it remotely for us, so hopefully that gets better, and if you hear concerns, you know, please pass that on. Freshman impact event, um, had a meeting January seventh, a planning meeting, and it's scheduled for April third. I had no idea what it was till I went. I've been, I've not heard of freshman impact. I've seen the vehicles and stuff, so very, very interesting project. Local input on what, um, what topics, breakout sessions they want for kids, you know, so I, I was really impressed with, with how they're organizing that. January sixth, um, I went to the O L C Education Committee meeting to share updates about Bennett County and answer any questions they had and discussing current initiatives that we have. January eighth, I attended a treasure hunt meeting. Treasure hut meeting, yeah. Uh, this group launched the thrift store, and the profits are going to fund scholarships for Bennett County students. It's just wonderful. And then the JAG students have really been instrumental in helping. They were actually at the meeting that night, so they're getting lots of good real-life experiences there. Uh, they offered to help with the Valentine raffle, to do a basket, so they're very involved with that, and it's really an impressive project. On the tenth was an in-service day where all staff continued their dis-training in this kind of a personality, help me out, guys, um, how, how to communicate, how you prefer to communicate and how others prefer to communicate, and, um, it's been very interesting, I think, and enlightening for, for all of us, and, um, just figuring out what your styles are. If you haven't done anything like that, it's, it is, um, very eye-opening, and I, I like those types of things, so, um. It helps open up the lines of communication and build stronger teams if you understand how, you know, so you're not offended by someone's facial expressions or non-verbal communication. And then it's also helping us with partnering with families and the community with our family engagement as well. One act plays performed yesterday in the Legion and then today in Peter. Have we heard anything?
I have not. Camden said they did really good.
Okay.
That's all I heard.
I went over and watched the play. It was very good and very fun. I always enjoy those things, so. On the thirteenth, I participated in the Zoom meeting with the district seven, or twenty-seven representatives to discuss critical issues to education, including opposition to the voucher funding and how that will affect public education. I felt that our representatives were receptive to the concerns that the group brought and, um, in making sure that there's equitable funding when, when they're looking at voucher bills and, and funding in general. On January thirteenth, we met with the international teachers to discuss their needs and provide assistance in extending their visas, um, ensuring that they continue their valuable contributions to Kentucky County School District. It's going to be an ongoing lesson for all of us. Oh, sorry. I think it's a mutual, they like being here and we like having them, so, um, we'll continue to work with them and do whatever we can to support them. Jacob Wan is going to start some volleyball skills building sessions with students in the surrounding area. That'll start in February. He's very conscientious about not having the events interfere with other activities that are going on, so he comes in and checks with us, and I'm very grateful for that. The track program expansion, we've talked about, um, adding the pole vault. Uh, Ken will evaluate the old pole vault pit this spring. There's still some construction debris and stuff there. Look at that and determine what's usable and what needs to be updated and, um, trying to reintroduce the pole vault back here at Bennett County. Administration, we met this morning, and one of the things that we discussed, one of many, um, was doing a board template report. So some of the things that we think that you would like to know on a monthly basis would be attendance, um, any testing data, student happenings and building happenings. If there's anything additional that you can think of that you would like reported on, you just need to let us know, and we'll see how we can work that in. Next year, we're planning on doing P B I S, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. We did that a few years ago. Um, I'm familiar with it and really like the process. Um, it helps build a strong, positive culture in our schools, so we're looking at, um, filling out an application to be a team with that. It's a tiered system. Um, you start by, um, team-based leadership, and then a continuum of supports, and then a comprehensive dat- data collection system and communication and collaboration, so, um, looking forward to getting that off the ground and getting that going for next school year. So we're also looking at a reading initiative through the state, and then also, um, some Julie's doing, uh, uh, out of school. So have a few things going on the grant side. Any questions?
I just have a comment about the sound system in the Warrior Center, because I can always hear very good on the south side where I sit, but I've been getting lots of concerns about the north side. So I went over there yesterday at the game, and it definitely is not as clear or loud as the south side. South side, there is no problem hearing any deep voices, high pitched, anything. You can hear everything okay very well from where I sit. I don't know, you were on the other end.
It sounded much better, and so did the.
Yes.
Wasn't going good.
The other side, though, because I started on the south, or I started on the north side when they were doing starting lineups, and it was, it was quiet, and then I walked over to my normal side, and it's definitely a lot clearer and a lot louder, so I don't know if it is.
When I sit on the north side, as a rule, and it's better than it was.
Yes, it is. But it's still not anywhere near.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to try and be on the south side.
Yeah, because if we're going to have graduation in there, yeah, it's going to have to be perfect.
Well, and we've had a few events that have not been, you know, the Veterans Day program was not good, so.
And when I was walking back over, I could tell once I hit the speakers on the, on the other side, because it was about at the basketball suite, I heard the speakers. I don't know if one of the, I mean, I should be able to hear.
Maybe speakers pulled out work.
I don't know. It's definitely not as good as it is.
Well, I, I, I believe there's somebody that's coming down. Um, they just wanted to make sure that they connected with us before. I think it was the Cologne game, so we did some, you know, remote stuff that way, so, and Lanay was working with them, and I think she walked around and.
Yeah, they didn't sound exactly different. Okay, so just throughout the gym, when the gym is empty.
Totally different, I bet, yeah.
Right. Harder to tell.
Yeah, I can relay that until when they end it. Okay.
Any further questions?
And, and continue to, you know, collect and give me feedback on that as we work through that.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, Carrie.
Well, let's start off, twenty twenty-five, uh, we have begun a Warriors Cup Challenge at the high school, and it's an attendance competition between the classes to see which class can meet the goal of ninety-two percent or higher, which is our, our school-wide goal for the high school. Um, and, um, you know, starting off in the month of January, it's been kind of touch and go with the cold weather, with a lot of illnesses and lots of activities. But I'm starting to see some kids pick up on that a little bit, and we've been doing a lot of promotion of that with our, with our morning announcements, and, um, there's going to be monthly recognitions for the classes who are in the lead for those things. So we're going to continue that throughout the rest of the semester. The seniors are planning for graduation. Uh, I helped meet with those this, today at lunch, and, um, they have started to vote. They voted on their class colors. They're going to be voting on their motto, and they're requesting to have a vote for choice of location. They will be finalized several of the decisions within the next few weeks, because we have a lot of families that are wanting that information, so they can start ordering their announcements and getting things figured out. Uh, the science club students are, excuse me, the science students are preparing for their science culmination night on January twenty-seventh from five to seven P M. at the Commons, and this is, um, where the students demonstrate their learning to their families and community members that come in, show them what kind of experiments they've been doing, have them participate in those experiences. Um, so that's something that's, that's kind of exciting, and everybody's welcome to come do that, and, um, that's kind of where, what I have for right now. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Carrie. Um, Kayla.
Um, I just put in for what our attendance has been so far up to the sixteenth. I did not put the seventeenth, the one I turned it in the day before, and I don't want to tell you where Friday attendance was. Yeah, wasn't the greatest, but, um, uh, our attendance, our seventh grade is, is struggling with their attendance, and so we've been brainstorming some different ideas, talking to the student council about maybe some things, um, asking them some, what, what can we do to pick some of that up. Um, our testing data just from fall to winter, we had some really great growth, um, and so we really wanted to share that, um, you know, sixth grade, we had seventy percent positive growth from the beginning of the year till the middle of the year, and that's a lot, um, for, for them, and seventy-two percent for E L A. So that was really exciting. Um, if you want to look at, you know, more test data, you're welcome to come in, and I can show you all the charts and the different things that we, that we do look at. Um, and so it's just, we, we really focus on the positive growth, not necessarily grade level or, you know, benchmark. I mean, of course, we look at that as well, but when you can see that from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, we've seen growth, and especially at this high growth, that's really great. And so seventh grade was fifty-four percent in math and seventy-two percent in E L A. Eighth grade was seventy-five percent in math and fifty-eight percent in E L A. And just some insights that I put, you know, seventh grade struggled with the, and sometimes seventh grade is the middle child, so sometimes you, you can see that. I mean, if we look from year to year, um, seventh grade seems to always kind of struggle a little bit with that. Um, and just so a few different things there. Um, some student happenings, um, if you had walked through our hallways the last couple of weeks, I've been working on life-size, um, projects for social studies, so they were playing there and tracing their bodies, and it was funny listening to the kids, "I can't draw. I don't know how to do this." And I said, "It doesn't have to be perfect," but, but they've really enjoyed doing that, and science had worked on some ecosystem projects, so, so those were pretty fun to see, that the projects happening, not just always sitting and doing footwork. Um, we did have donuts with grownups today, um, and so we had some parents come in and eat donuts with the kids this morning, so that was fun. Um, and then just A and the honor roll was sent to the paper, and we just really shouted out our kids, "Great job." And one other thing I did put on here, but weekly, um, with the Renaissance program, that's where our star testing comes from, we also have a program in there called Freckle, and Freckle is, um, a program that they can work on at their level, and we can assign above or whatever. So kids get on there, um, and work on different things, and we, or every day I get a report, and so if somebody's mastered a level in either fractions or, um, multiplication or division, I print off, uh, paper, a certificate for them, and they get shouted out on, on through the intercom. So some of the kids are bringing them home. I have a couple of teachers that are putting them on the wall, but, um, but we have kids that are mastering levels in those, and those are great, because that's, you know, it just keeps throwing them, you know, more and more stuff at, at their level and above to get them where they need to go, so I just wanted to make sure. So if you see those certificates or ask your kid about them. So, there you go. That's all I got.
When's our next snowmaker date?
February seventh. I just wrote that down. I'm going to make sure it's seven minutes.
And just for future years, if we're going to set a Friday as a snow possible potential, maybe try to avoid a Friday where basketball team is at a tournament, the rest of us are at a tournament. There was a lot of.
A lot. Sometimes the calendar may be four, we have schedules.
I understand that.
Maybe we'll have to look at possibly revising calendar after those were set.
But the Jones Family Tournament is always same weekend, and the Phillip Reston Tournament is always that same weekend.
And Fridays are tough anyways. I mean, are just, you know, everybody's so afraid to not having school on Friday, but.
And there wasn't a whole lot of, it was a perfect storm, because it was just the week before, so there wasn't a lot of time either.
Right. Absolutely.
If we wanted to have that, we'd have two.
So we just try to do everything that we can to, first off, explain that Friday is still school. It's not a fun day, because sometimes the kids or the parents think, "Well, you're not going to do anything anyway, so they don't need to be there." Well, that's not true. We do, you know, we do still have school, so, and missing hours, just like any other day, don't miss out. It's still about.
Any further questions? Thank you, Kayla. Melissa.
Um, so I'll start with attendance. Uh, we had a hundred and twelve students. We had two hundred and twenty-three students altogether at the grade school, but we had a hundred and twelve students that made ninety-four percent or better, and we made certificates, gave out pencils, um, kind of made it a big deal. You know, some kids were like asking why they, other kids got pencils, and they said, "Because I got good attendance," so they're encouraging each other. We also, uh, do a weekly challenge too, and on Monday morning, we announce who, out of each wing, uh, which classroom had the best attendance, and they really like to hear their class announced, so there's no, um, award or anything attached to it. They just like to hear their name, not competitive sides, so. Um, we did have twenty-two students. This was, uh, right at Christmas break. We had twenty-two students with perfect attendance, and the kids are already asking, "What do I get if I have perfect attendance?" Well, I give them backpacks, so we'll just have to be creative on what we give them for, uh, perfect attendance at the end of the year. Our testing data, um, we looked at their star reading and star math, and in reading, fifty percent of our students have already achieved the end-of-year goal, and by that it means that they've gained their fifty points in star reading and in star math, so, um, we have fifty percent of kids that made reading, and we have fifty percent of our kids already made, uh, their end-of-year goal in math, so we're, we're moving right along, so that's good. Uh, student happenings is we have. Uh, student happenings is we have our first-grade parent breakfast, and the students and parents engaged in some STEM activities that were creative and collaborative with families. And a building happening is we're gonna have our second and third-grade music concert in January 30th at 5:00. I believe it's at 6:30. Yeah, at 6:30. Can we hold it down? With something going on, the policy may be.
Policy.
Any questions? Thank you, Melissa. Amy.
I'm not gonna reread because some, some stuff online is the same as what they did, but I do want to talk about the Room App. That's the app that all three buildings share for parents. The company is awesome to work with. They're constantly trying to make it user-friendly for parents. So they should have just rolled out a new update where it's a lot easier to switch from kid to kid. There's not so much clicking on the app. So, um, hopefully we can get our parents to utilize it a little bit more. I'll be reviewing the budget with the schools just to see where we are as far as title monies and making sure we have the name that we need to. Also, starting a book study at elementary I'm excited about. And the, oops, I'm gonna go back, sorry. Um, just so you guys know where the app is or where the livestream meetings are. So if you go to the menu, and you go down to the school board, they're right here. And if you want to have it up, you are live right now. So. There you go. It's a little delayed, but it's just fine. So if you want it somewhere else, or if you want to get it sorted some way, then let me know, and I can work on it. Check this gracious, you have to spend some time with me and make it quick so I can just upload it. Easy to find? Yeah, easy to find. That's all, yeah.
Questions? Thank you, Amy. Joe? Oh, come on, we didn't hear something. I hope.
I think we're gonna submit tomorrow.
Okay. Item number 86.0, made a motion to surplus the following. 26, 2019 Chromebooks, the MGS, outdated. One Chromebook, middle school, outdated. Switch, the high school, outdated. So moved. Motion by Scott, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 87.0, made a motion to recognize the Bennett County Administrator Bargaining Group as a negotiating unit for the 2025-2026 school year. Motion by Kayla, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 88.0, made a motion to recognize the Bennett County Classified BCCEA Bargaining Group as a negotiating unit for the 2025-2026 school year. Motion by Dallas, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 89.0, I would entertain a motion to recognize the Bennett County Education Association, BCEA, as a bargaining group, as a negotiating unit for the 2025-20, excuse me, 26th school year.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Scott. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the polling places for the school board election April 8th, 2025. Combination of precincts, Martin Rural, 26-27, and City of Martin into one precinct to vote in the library community room. VTAL and Todd Hill precincts combined into one precinct to vote at the VTAL firehouse, and Allen precinct to vote at the Allen cap office.
So moved.
Motion by Dallas, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 91.0, I entertain a motion to approve the hourly wage of $20 per hour plus mileage for the election judges and clerks for the school board election, and $20 plus mileage for attendance at these election board training.
So moved.
Motion by Dallas, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, item number 92.0, prior to, the motion.
Yeah, one, thank you. Thank you.
Prior to the motion on the opposition to the school voucher program proposal, I'm going to have Kayla read the proposal.
Um, opposition to school voucher proposal. Whereas South Dakota public schools are a cornerstone of the state and the pride of their communities, welcoming all children, educating and feeding them, connecting them with their friends and mentors, and helping shape their future while preparing them to be the next generation of our state's workforce. Whereas the proposed education savings account, DSA, for the 2025 legislative session is simply a different title for a school voucher program. Whereas, research indicates school voucher programs consistently fail to improve academic outcomes. Whereas, the proposed program will be implemented by using millions of public taxpayer dollars to fund non-public schools that may pick and choose who they admit while also charging tuition and raising millions of dollars in scholarship funds or to fund homeschool programs with no transparency or accountability measures to prove success similar to those required of public schools. Whereas, the state budget, which provides the funding increase for public education, faces constraints due to stagnant revenue collection, and as a result, the proposed increase in state aid for public schools is less than the level of inflation. Whereas, with lower-than-expected revenue collections creating a lean state budget, the introduction of a new ongoing funding system for a school voucher program will eventually, eventually lead to an unbalanced state budget or a decrease in funding for public education. Whereas, the school voucher program will stop at the initial amount as the intention to grow school voucher funding has already been stated even before it has been adopted. Whereas, the school voucher program's planned and inevitable growth will be damaging to the future of our public school system, students, and communities. Whereas, we, as school board members, insist our legislators oppose the proposed school voucher program because of the foreseeable detrimental impact it will have on South Dakota's public school system at the expense of our students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bennett County School Board oppose the proposed school voucher program for the 2025 legislative session.
Thank you, Kayla. I need a motion to approve the resolution to oppose the, to oppose the proposed school voucher program for the 2025 legislative session.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Dallas. Board discussion. This is definitely gonna be a hot topic in legislature this year, so. The more we can get this out to the public and, and to our legislatures, you know, the better off, you know, that we will be. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mike, you have a resolution number on that? Like resolution? You have a resolution number on that or name on that?
Just the name on it, then it comes.
I don't have to have the number on it.
It doesn't, it doesn't say, so I'm, I guess I can check tomorrow, too.
You might want to check on that.
Okay.
Will you let associate school board know that we?
Let's see about accounting.
Okay.
It's an ill-being agreement that you approved, and I don't, I don't think so.
Did we, did we do? Did we vote again, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was, yeah, we did because that's okay. Thank you. Item number 93.0, motion to approve Cindy Allen Heinz, $800 to the Warriors' boys basketball coach for the 2024-2025 school year. Motion by Dallas, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 94.0, need a motion to approve the one-year maintenance agreement with Rasmus and Mechanical Services in the amount of $33,132, which breaks down to the Martin Elementary of $14,388, the high school, middle school, $13,412, and the Legion Auditorium, $5,332.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Kayla. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters pursuant to SDCL 1-25-21, student issues pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, negotiations pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, legal issues pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 with possible action.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, whoever's second.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Board discussion. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are in executive session. A reminder, confidentiality was discussed, and executive session must be strictly adhered to. You got the time?
Did you have to show all of you do that again?
Yeah.
So I just need to go down to the screen.
I just need to go down to the screen.
Okay, I declare a side of the executive session at six thirty-six. I need a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second of Dallas. Discussion. Hearing done. All favor of the motion signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. We are in adjournment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Six thirty-seven.